And am I just going to go through the? Call to order? So we're going to have clerk call to order.
Meeting will be called to order at 5:00 P. M.
We will now rise for the pledge of allegiance and then afterwards stay, uh, stay standing for the code of, code of conduct. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
As we gather, we humbly seek blessings upon this meeting. May we act with strength, courage, and the will to perform our obligations and duties to our people with justice to all. Let us seek wisdom so that we may act in the best interest of our people, our neighbors, and our country. All this we ask so we may serve our community with fairness and respect, putting their needs before all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
I'll read the statement of behavioral standards. The city of Santa Clara has adopted a code of ethics and values and behavioral standards for public meetings to promote and maintain the highest levels of conduct. This includes mutual respect, robust discussion, and allowing city business to be done in an efficient and consistent manner. Please note that as a presiding officer, the vice mayor's direction in matters of process and decorum should be followed, and that use of the gavel indicates all conversations must conclude, and everyone in attendance should come to order and attention. Welcome and thank you for your participation.
Should we do the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Watanabe, here. Thank you. Let the record reflect that councilmember Shahal will be absent from this meeting. Councilmember Hardy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Park.
Here.
Councilmember Jane.
Here.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
And also for the record, Mayor Gilmore is also absent from this meeting.
Chair, I would like to make a motion to excuse, uh, councilmember Shahal and Mayor Gilmore.
Second.
A motion and a second, or is there any discussion on the motion? And seeing none, do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Jane made that motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Member Jane, second by councilmember Hardy.
Okay. Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Oh, actually, you, do you have your devices?
We do have our lives.
You want to do?
Well, it's not for voting. They took out the other one.
No, the, your iPads, are they up and running?
Oh, yeah, it is, it's up.
Okay.
I do see.
Oh, so I haven't joined yet.
Oh. Okay, well.
Still trying to join.
No worries. Uh, councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy?
Yes.
And vice mayor, okay. Councilmember Jane?
Here, oh, sorry, yes.
And councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously.
Very much.
Okay, I'm in now.
Okay. So for today's meeting, the council is back in person, conducting meeting in a hybrid manner. Uh, the public is welcome to attend in person, as we have here, and the city continues to use the Zoom feature to allow participation from the safety of your home or office. Members of the public can still join via the link or call into Zoom meeting, into the Zoom meeting phone number shown on screen, not now, but hopefully it'll be there. Thank you. Uh, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand on the Zoom app application or press star nine on your phone. Please only raise your hand while the item you are seeking to speak on is presented. Uh, staff will enter your name, last four digits of your phone number, and I will call on you to speak. And we have one item, uh, to discuss, which is the interviews, uh, action on appointment of members to the Santa Clara Station Area Plan Task Force, S A T F. And if we have, uh, staff to make a quick presentation on logistics to let the people at, at home know the schedules and the meeting, meeting plan for the task force.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Park. We have Rena Brio, the Assistant Director of Community Development, and she just teems me, she doesn't hear anything, so let us fix that, and then we'll have her provide you with the logistics. Rena is on her way into chambers.
Oh, no worries. And I think that when we get to the questions, we'll just go down the questions in order, starting from councilmember Becker, and we'll just rotate through.
Um, in the meantime, I will just go over that, um, I have communicated and contacted all of the applicants, and they're all aware that there, they will all each have a three-minute introduction, followed by council questions, concluding with a one-minute closing statement. And they all have received the questions beforehand.
Excellent, thank you very much. Uh, yes, just kind of logistics on how often the, the task force would meet and thanks for this task force, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So our task force is intended to meet monthly for the duration of the plan, which is expected to be about 18 months.
And we've got councilmember Jane, would you like to?
Yeah, so, um, there are categories, right? So we previously had seven people appointed, and now we have categories that we're selecting for. I just wanted you to explain to the public what the categories are and.
Yes, yes. So previously, we had seven members who are already appointed, so we were looking to fill four additional spots. Previously, we had a, um, request from the council to find individuals who would be specialized in transportation. Um, there was also a request to have someone from the S E S Hall. Um, the S E S Hall actually declined participating because they didn't have anyone. And, uh, we do have an at-large member, so we are actually, and I believe I'm missing one category.
Business.
Business.
Business, thank you. A business owner. So, um, the candidates that staff has recommended fit into those buckets. I did want to clarify that, um, I believe there's one candidate who had put themselves down for, uh, I think it's specifically a transportation advocate, but in their written description, they also indicated an interest to be an at-large member. So, um, that candidate, Shriti Marashi, is actually a candidate that we're proposing for an at-large member.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, without further ado, maybe we should go directly into the interviews. Uh, councilmember Becker.
About that, uh, could you explain, uh, so then, I've been asked a lot of questions about Brown Act, if people would, if any of the members of this would have to abide by the Brown Act.
I actually will want to check with our city attorney's office on that, um, so I can do that while we're discussing to see if the Brown Act applies to this group.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
My hand is raised.
Yes. Councilmember Watson.
Yeah, thank you, Ree. Sorry, no.
No.
So, uh, so two questions. So do, um, the, uh, candidates, do they get sworn in? And number two, I see that they're going to start running, uh, Thursday. I mean, the first meeting is this Thursday, so we got to get this done, right?
Right, there is urgency, uh, because the schedule for reviewing the consultant that will be really doing the technical work for the specific plan needs to be chosen. The V T A led the R F P process for that, but the city, including task force members, are intended to sit on the R F P panel, selection panel. So we do have a task force meeting scheduled for Thursday so that the task force members can decide amongst themselves which of the two of them will actually be reviewing the R F Ps and helping to select the consultant.
And then do they get sworn in also, like regular commissioners, or is it?
Correct. Yes, they will get sworn in on Thursday. Um, the city clerk's office will be coming earlier to the meeting in order to conduct those.
Great, great, thank you.
I don't see any other, but I'm having trouble closing this. Okay, but I don't think that's going to stop us. Are there any questions? I don't see any, but. So we can start with, um, first person, I believe it's Rich Blanco, from a transportation advocate, and he should be on Zoom.
That's correct, so we will move him over.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And Rich, you can share your screen if you'd like.
I was just planning to, to speak, actually. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So, um, I'm going to do an introduction. My name is Rich Blanco. Um, the reason why I'd like to join the task force is I'd like to improve our city, and I've been participating in the traffic lane study on Prunridge Avenue over the past few years. Um, later in my career, and I have more time to volunteer and serve the community, and this would be my first task force assignment. In terms of knowledge or experience, well, through my experiences at work as an engineering manager and a program manager, I'm familiar with the skills of working on teams. Uh, through my engineering education, I have an understanding of technical studies and interpreting their results. If I think about myself as an auto-driving resident of Santa Clara for the last 34 years, and a bicyclist all that time, I'm really interested in accommodating bicycles and pedestrians to make our city more livable and less dependent on fossil fuels, and enable our neighborhoods to achieve high walkability scores. And when I think about this study, a successful outcome, I think would be positive changes to our streets and bikeways to make Santa Clara more pedestrian bicycle-friendly in this area, the station, the station area. And, um, maybe we'd have a news article or survey ranking with Santa Clara being in the 20 best livable small cities, that would be a successful outcome to me. I'd like to, um, what are some skills I have? I think I'm a good listener of various opinions and views from others. I'm polite and respectful of people different from myself. I'm thoughtful in forming opinions. I, I take my assignments and work very seriously, and I like to get things done. I've been a youth soccer coach and a team manager for nine years in Santa Clara. I've twice served on the board of our local pool club for four years, and I currently serve as a trustee on the board of our condominium for three-year period. Now, I understand there's some questions, did you like me to answer the questions?
No, we'll, we will go through the questions, we'll have the councilmembers ask the questions in turn.
Okay.
But thank you very much. So we'll talk with councilmember, we'll ask councilmember Becker, we'll start with question number one.
Thank you, Rich, for being interested in this, in this, and also applying. Uh, what is your vision, uh, for T O D at the 244-acre Santa Clara Station area as described in the city's general plan?
Well, I had to read, that was a transit-oriented development, I wasn't familiar with that, that term. Um, it's, it's clearly a central point for public transportation. It would be the gateway to Santa Clara for three different train services. It could be the central hub for a bicycle network from the train area there. Um, it could be major new access for Santa Clara University students, faculties, and visitors who fly into the local airports. Um, I think about how convenient it is in other cities, in Cleveland or Boston, when you land at the airport and you can take public transportation and actually get to the universities, and it could be that way. Um, I, I, I know there are new developments, I drove around the area over the weekend, I saw the Benton, the luxury apartments, um, that is a major new development in that area. I, I, I know there's other, uh, high-tech campuses nearby, like the Ruku over by the airport, and that maybe it's a possible, uh, area for a full-service hotel. Maybe if we dream a little, it could have a rail connection over to the San Jose Airport, or, or even, uh, surface trains up and down El Camino. Um, I think it's a wonderful area for low-income housing. I especially think about teachers who could be close to Santa Clara University for continuing education, and to capture new education grads for the Santa Clara schools if they had a low-income housing developed there. It's just a wonderful area, uh, central to public transportation that really could be developed in a lot of different ways.
Great, thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Rich, for applying. Please tell us about at least three public facilities in the area.
Well, I, I, as I mentioned, I drove over there, um, over the weekend, and I saw the Santa Clara Transit Center, and this is the main gateway for people arriving. Caltrans, or the Altamont Corridor Express, I learned was the, one of the trains in the new Bart Station that's planned. Um, the second, uh, location is the new police station, I call it the new police station. It's, um, maybe a few years old now, but it's relatively new to me. And the main fire station is located in this area. And I also realized the Reed Dog Park and the Reed and Grant Sports Park are not in the area, although I was a little bit familiar with that, but it's just outside the boundaries of this, of 244-acre space.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest, respect, with respect to your business or financial interests in serving on this task force? Will you disclose those when discussing issues?
No, I don't see any conflicts at all, and yes, I certainly would disclose those.
Thank you very much. Uh, what do you think about 15-minute communities or urban villages? Just for the people out there, 15-minute communities are communities in which necessities and services are within a 15-minute walking or biking distance from, from where you live.
Yes, thank you, I had to look up that term myself this weekend. I, I love this idea. I'd love to see more neighborhoods in Santa Clara planned to be of this lifestyle. I think of it as sort of an urban lifestyle versus a suburban. Um, I've lived this way in Boston and enjoy it very much. I can, I can fly in and not use the car at all, and get to all the areas and services that I need by just walking around. So I would, I would love to see this area turned into a 15-minute community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying, uh, Rich. Uh, so my question for you is, what is your view on minimum parking ratios?
Yeah, I, I suspect many of our existing structures have way too many parking spaces. If you look at them from an aerial view, you really notice how much of the lot is taken up by parking areas, and then the building is really a small portion of a large lot. I, I would really like to see more green space and trails and sidewalks and less parking to encourage public transportation and walking and bicycling.
Thank you.
That brings us back to councilmember Becker for our last question.
Thank you. And for your final question, Rich, what, which is a very important question, what is your view on affordable housing targets?
Um, I'm not actually familiar with the targets. I saw that there, as I did a little bit of research, that maybe 15% of rental units must be affordable to various classes of affordable housing, and for sale and ownership, 15% offered, um, to, um, various categories of affordable housing as well. I, I think the station area provides a wonderful opportunity to develop low-income housing because, uh, I guess it has a lot of access, will eventually have a lot of access for people, and we need a wide variety of people to live in the community to be able to provide all the services that everyone needs in the community. So I, I see this area as a wonderful opportunity to build some new, um, affordable housing projects.
Great, thank you, Rich.
Thank you very much. If there are any other questions, um, I don't see any, but that will leave you with one minute to give a closing statement.
Now, very good. I, I would say I'm looking forward to serving on the task force, to learn more about Santa Clara and to be more involved. Clara and to be more involved in our community. I've focused my time over the last 38 years on my professional career, raising my two adult kids and living with my wife, and now I'd like to channel some of that energy into volunteering while I finish the last years of my career. And this would be the first opportunity for me to participate in a community and volunteer position like this. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you very much for your application.
Our next applicant is Raymond Hashimoto.
Thank you, Mr. Hashimoto. You'll have three minutes to give introduction.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair, excuse me, Vice Mayor Park and members of the council appreciate this opportunity to be for you. I am very interested in being part of this task force. It's right up my alley because I'm a land use planner by training. I have an undergraduate degree in city and regional planning from Cal Poly. I'm on the Dean's Leadership Council for Cal Poly, so I have a lot going back into my academics in terms of, of, about planning and learning about planning and using those skills for my career. But I think most of all, it's important that I have been a 40-year resident of Santa Clara. So not only am I, you know, professionally involved, I am a principal at HMH Engineers, a civil engineer in land planning, landscape architecture, and a survey company in San Jose. But we do quite a bit of work in Santa Clara, and so since it's my home as well, I really want to be involved in what I think can be a long-term and important plan for our city. I belong to the American Institute of Certified Planners. I was, served 18 years on the VTA Citizen Advisory Committee and was on the 2010 Santa Clara General Plan Steering Committee with Vice Mayor Park. So I've done some community work. I think this is the next step and opportunity that I have to sort of get back to my city and hopefully assist in creating a great plan.
Thank you very much, sir. And if we start with Councilmember Hardy on question number one.
These will start to sound familiar. What is your vision for TOD? For anyone who's not familiar with this, transportation occupancy density. There we go. Oriented development. I started to call it something different. I've been around too long. At the 244-acre Santa Clara Station area as described in the city's general plan?
Yeah, we had this area sort of staked out as part of the 2010 general plan, but I'm glad we're finally getting to it and actually going to be able to implement something at this important transportation hub, which is the historic train station in Santa Clara. I think this plan has an opportunity to take advantage of some of the development that's already occurred in the Gateway Crossing Project. That, at that location, we have an underground connection underneath the tracks, back over to the side of the, of the tracks, to the train station. And HMH worked on that, so I think I have an affinity for how important that is. And then I think, working off of what's happening on that crossing plan, I think we, as part of this plan, I envision being able to take a look at the Costco site, the Apple site, some of the retail that's on that book that's across the street from that Gateway Crossing Project, and really look at that as an opportunity as well. Now, that's going to take relocating or looking for different places for those uses to be, but I think that corner is so important in providing a great opportunity to do something at that location that, again, plays off of what's happening at Gateway Crossings. I think their connectivity is important in this plan as well. To get the Old Quad, to get the downtown, to get SCU, being able to be connected across El Camino Real to the station without crossing six lanes of traffic is something that I would hope we could do. Now, I looked at the location where Franklin Street terminus is, right by the entrance to Santa Clara. And if you can take that and start some sort of ramp system, some sort of flyover that goes over to the parking lot at the train station, that would provide a grade difference, a grade crossing difference for pedestrians and bicyclists to get on that side, which I think would be an improvement. And then that also lands at a prime housing location, which is now the Santa Clara Station Parking Lot. So that's a great, a great housing opportunity with some, some retail put into there as well. But I think some things like that are very important with this. And when I look at this plan area, I compare it to some of the other specific plans that we've had, the Tasman East Plan, the Lawrence Plan, the Patrick Henry Plan. Those are all substantially smaller than this 244 acres. So I think we need to look with the consultants objectively at how much we can bite off and chew and swallow with this specific plan. And maybe we look at illuminating some portions of the area which may not be ready for redevelopment, and we can shrink this area down to something that's more manageable and something that we can do something that's implementable. So I'd like to look at that as part of our study.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Please tell us about at least three public facilities in this area.
That's great. I'm glad Rich named those off as well, but I, I'm glad to talk about the ones I saw. Of course, station number one, Santa Clara Fire, which is at the very edge. I also have the Silicon Valley Power Substation and the Water Tank, which is behind the Costco, which is another city facility, Santa Clara Police Station, and the historic Santa Clara Train Station and future BART location. Those are the four that I came up with, and I agree on the, on the periphery, there are other parks that are in the vicinity as well, which we should probably link into.
Thank you very much, sir. And do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest with respect to your business or financial interests in, in serving on this task force? And if so, would you disclose those when discussing issues?
I don't see any at this point. I don't represent anybody who has property in those areas. So I think that, at the moment, I don't have any conflicts. And if I had a perceived conflict, I would certainly announce that and disclose that.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for applying, Ray. So what do you think about 15-minute communities or urban villages?
It's interesting. I, urban villages is something that we've heard, we've heard in San Jose, when Rena was in San Jose, and we implemented things there, villages. And I like the concept. I like the concept of being able to provide sort of small interconnected cities that have, that are transportation-oriented. I think that's, that's a good plan. What I see as issues related to TODs is pattern of ownership and the ability to get things done if you have a whole bunch of small parcels which can't be assembled. So I think, I love what, the idea of them. I think we need to look hard on how we can implement them. We have village plans in San Jose, many of them, which haven't been able to be implemented. So I think we need to be, look at those concepts and use them, but also come up with plans that are implementable, because I think there's some difficulties when the pattern of ownership is difficult to provide for a larger project or a cohesive project that way.
Thank you. Councilmember Becker for question number five.
What is your view on minimum parking ratios?
I would agree that minimum parking ratios are a thing of the future and/or are happening right now, and I think that is a good thing. It'll force us to get us out of our cars. I think the, the issues that arise with those are the ability to implement them incrementally, because right now there are still lots of financial institutions, a lot of builders and developers who can't get financing are, are not able to rent units or commercial spaces without a designated number of parking spaces. So I think it is a wave of the future. I think we have to be smart about how we implement it, because I, we certainly don't want to build a project that somebody can't rent. So, you know, let's, let's take a look at those and let's see how they can be sort of feathered in when we talk about the future.
Thank you, Raymond.
Thank you. Last question, and I will also ask if you can address, I was a little confused because the address you gave on your application says San Jose, but then you said you were a Santa Clara resident, so I'll let you...
I'll answer the, I'll answer the first one, the last question first, which is, my San Jose address was my business address.
Okay.
My home address is 2815 Ponderosa Way.
You don't have to tell us.
But anyway, I am a Santa Clara resident and have been.
I was just confused by that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I do read that. I don't want you to have to say your address if you don't want to. Okay. What is your view on affordable housing targets?
I believe in those housing targets. I think that's a way to be able to nicely encourage housing to be, to be built. I think all of my development-type clients would look at an end-to-end fee before actually building, which I think may be a little bit unfortunate, but 15% for the rental and 20% for ownership, I think, is a good thing. What I'm most partial to is looking for housing for the missing middle. I have a son who's a teacher. I have his wife, my daughter-in-law, is a teacher, and I'd love for them to be able to live in the valley, but it's becoming increasingly difficult for them to be able to locate and find affordable housing, and I think I am partial to that. So I do have a positive view in terms of what Santa Clara's done with the core companies and charities housing. We've worked personally on some of those projects and take a great deal of pride with being associated with the affordable housing projects that we've worked on.
Thank you very much. And now you have one minute to give us a closing.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm hoping that I can be a valued person in this, in this task force. I believe I can. I hope you and your colleagues feel that, that I will be as well. I'd love to get my, roll up my sleeves and get in with the, with the, with the consultants who are going to work on this and really come up with a plan that I think is buildable, implementable, and then one that we can all be happy with. But it's a balance. It's a balance of a lot of different things. I've always worked in teams, so I know that there is give and take in everything that we do, but are ready to do that and hopefully come out the other end with a great plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Takes us to our next applicant, which is Jill Huff. Thank you very much. You have three minutes to give us your introduction.
Good afternoon and good evening, commissioners, and thank you very much for inviting me to interview for this important task. My name is Jill Huff. I am a seasoned transportation professional. I've been working in the transportation consulting space over, over three decades. Most of that has been in the Bay Area. I call San Jose my home, but I often come to City of Santa Clara. I'm actually a frequent visitor of the 49ers at Levi's Stadium in your city. I, I enjoy being involved in all aspects of transportation planning, which often involves urban planning. Those two things do go hand in hand. I have, I am on two panels by the National Cooperative Highway Research Program to perform, to be a panel member to sort of guide the process of research for transportation so that we can advance the state of the practice and make better policy decisions about transportation. I think that I could use a lot of my training and background to be an asset for this task force, and I would love to have the opportunity to help your city have the best possible outcome from this important asset.
Thank you very much. And we'll start with Councilmember Jane with question number one.
Thank you, Jill. What is your vision for TOD at the 244-acre Santa Clara Station area as described in the general plan?
Well, my vision for, for the plan for the Santa Clara Station area is one of true sustainability. And what I mean by sustainability is a very well-integrated land use and transportation plan, along with careful consideration of reductions to, of, to greenhouse gas emissions and also maximizing the economic opportunity and accessibility of the plan. And what I, what I think about the station area itself is that when you craft a plan that meets those pillars of sustainability, you end up with a plan that looks like a station area that has an incredibly vibrant atmosphere. It has place-making attributes that people are attracted to and want to gather at for a variety of reasons. They could be waiting to take a train. They could be finishing up a business meeting and grabbing a coffee to get to their next one. They could be meeting friends. They could be meeting friends to have a social visit at the station area, or they could be taking one of the transportation modes to get to another destination. This transportation hub would essentially consist of a mixed-use project that would consist of housing. It would have jobs. It would have commercial establishments that would provide all sorts of amenities for not only the people that live there, but all the visitors to that station that are using it for transportation needs. So if you think about it in that sense, it serves this incredible purpose that's both local and regional in nature. And as, given all of my experience as a consultant, one thing I've learned along the way is that no matter what the city is in the Bay Area, they are all trying to solve both a regional transportation problem as well as a local one, because in this region, we have jobs everywhere, and we have people that need to get to those jobs, and they have been moving to different parts of the Bay Area and even beyond in order to work here. So if you can have a plan and a station area that starts to make traction with solving that scale of a problem, you, you actually have an incredible asset.
Thank you very much. And please tell us about at least three public facilities in the area. I know people have listed them, but, yeah, I'd kind of like to know a little bit of what's your view on those, those...
I'll try to make them my own.
Okay.
Of course, like, first and foremost, it's difficult to not notice the Caltrain Station. I've, I've visited that station many times over the last 25 years that I've, I've lived here in the area, and it's, it, it has a lot of character. There is historic aspects to, to that facility, and it provides a major transportation amenity currently. I also noticed that there is an important pedestrian and bicycle underpass that goes under, underneath the tracks in order to create connectivity between this side, the Santa Clara side of the tracks, and then the opposite side where you have, you know, you, you have some industrial uses and not necessarily what you would think of as a very urban environment on the other side, but you do have a connect, a connection point so that bicyclists and pedestrians can get to the station, and that's very important to maintain. The third thing I think about, the third public facility, would be El Camino Real itself. In my, in my studies with other entities in the Bay Area, mostly public agencies, I'm very aware of the fact that there are studies to look at El Camino Real as a complete street and provide for wide sidewalks, buffered bike lanes, as well as much, much safer pedestrian crossing locations at intersections or perhaps even mid-block where there may not be a lot of, where there may be sort of a gap in opportunities to cross with a traffic light. There are many treatments that NACTO, the National Association of Transportation Officials, are using to increase safety for pedestrians and for bicyclists, because we are in a new age now where we have to recognize that we have to provide safe options and attractive ones for all modes, not just cars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying, Jill. I have to say, I was born in Brooklyn, so I appreciate your response about living in an iconic transportation-oriented residential development, because I used to... because I used to commute every day into New York City to go to work. So I -- we have a lot -- probably have a lot in common. So, but anyway, my question for you is, do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest with respect to your business or financial interests in serving on this task force? Will you disclose those when discussing issues?
Okay. Thank you for that. I think I'm going to take this opportunity to make a shameless plug, that I was involved and I led the transportation analysis for the VTA BART Transit Oriented Communities Strategies for the Santa Clara Station, for the San Jose Stations, as well as the station in Alam Rock. And so that's not a conflict of interest at all. It's just part of my background. I have some insights on this process. I do not have any current professional activities that relate to this station or pose any conflict. If that were to somehow come up down the road, I would be proactive in letting all the folks know involved in the project that that was the case, and I would either recuse myself or I would make arrangements to not pose that conflict.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for applying, Jill. My question for you is, what do you think about 15-minute communities or urban villages?
Well, I was thinking about that quite a bit over the last day or two and on the way over here, and, you know, the concepts are appealing on many levels. I think it is incredibly challenging to create those environments, and I think it depends on where we are geographically, of course, but I'm speaking about the Bay Area and I'm speaking about the station area. It is -- it's a process that can be a very useful tool in terms of, I guess what I think of it as, is it's a planning construct that is very useful to be able to leverage a specific process of planning the area, developing visions and goals for what the area could aspire to be, creating or developing a plan for what amenities are necessary. Those could be transportation, but they could be non-transportation as well, and putting together an implementation plan to start to link the needed facilities with possible funding strategies, prioritizing what needs to come first, you know, what are the near-term needs, what are the longer-term needs. And then ultimately, when you can formalize that type of plan in the context of, for example, an urban village framework, it can make -- applying for grants and being eligible for grants a little bit better, which in this environment, currently, we have very limited funding for planning of this nature, and most cities can't take it on 100%. So wherever there is an opportunity to be able to leverage funds by formalizing a process and complying with regional requirements for that process, I think it gives you a big leg up to be able to actually realize your plan.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying, Jill. What is your view on minimum parking ratios?
So I think the trend has been, and more cities are starting to look at eliminating minimum parking requirements. We are in an environment where we need to really become less car-centric, and we need to become more multimodal. But in order to really, if you think about that, in order for people to become more interested in alternative modes, those other modes have to be very reliable, very attractive, and safe, and convenient. So the reduction or the elimination of minimum parking requirements is a very, potentially a very good step in that direction. But it also usually works better when you can infuse an area such as this one with many benefits or amenities that allow for people to get there conveniently without taking a car. So those two things would go hand in hand. As opposed to just making an area very difficult to park in, in and of itself, you're going to get a lot of people that are unhappy with that situation. When you try -- related to that, when you try to eliminate parking minimums, oftentimes there can be community pushback. And I think one of the ways to deal with that is to perform a study of parking inventory, looking at where parking is actually utilized, where it is yet less utilized, and doing that over an area that's kind of covered by the entire station area in this case, so that you have an opportunity to utilize the parking better. Oftentimes, what happens is, parking is not really a shortage on the whole, but there may be pockets of parking areas that are overparked and people want to park there. So a way to balance that out is that if you can provide good signage and wayfinding within something like a station area, you can really use your assets much better and more -- in a more balanced fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is your view on affordable housing targets?
For me, the aspiration to incorporate affordable housing into this type of plan is definitely -- it speaks to the economic opportunity and accessibility pillar of sustainability that I mentioned a few minutes ago. Part of that is also the fact that in many of our areas that are being redeveloped or like priority development areas and the like, many times, there is pushback from the community about displacement, which is a real issue. And I think that the flexibility to be able to incorporate affordable housing into this plan is going to alleviate a lot of displacement issues, and it may not address that topic completely, but it is a big part of that. I also think it's incredibly vital as part of the messaging for why that's such an important component of the plan, is that I think all of us in this room and on the virtual end as well realize that providing housing for all of the services and people that fill those roles that we all enjoy is just -- it's necessary. I mean, we all have -- we all go to places for personal services. We send our children to school. We use libraries. We want the people that work at these places and give these services to us to also live in our community.
Thank you very much. And you have one minute to give us a closing statement.
Thank you very much, commissioners. Again, it was really my pleasure to speak with you this evening. I don't know if you can tell, but I would be absolutely thrilled, and I would also be honored to serve on this task force. As a consultant, I work hard to help clients solve their challenges, and it's gratifying work. But what I find even more gratifying is to hammer out the details of an important plan that's going to change people's lives, and I think that's what this plan has the potential to do. I'm a collaborator by nature. I like to think creatively, and I like to listen to everyone's ideas. In fact, sometimes when I hear others' ideas, I try to better those ideas, and I sort of discard ones that I might have had that were not as good.
Thank you very much, Ms. Huff.
Thank you.
That takes us to Daniel Huhn. So you will have three minutes to give an introduction, and then we'll go into the questions.
All right. Hello, fellow Santa Clarans. My name is Daniel Huhn, and I'm a lifelong Santa Clara resident who previously served on the homelessness task force. I am greatly honored and humbled to be a finalist, to be an at-large member for this station area task force. First off, I would like to express my deep gratitude to the city council for voting to interview me, along with the other fine and honorable finalists. It's great to be here in this historic city hall where many monumental decisions were made. Many of these decisions still impact us today, with the best examples being our fine public parks, such as Central Park near where I live. I remember passing by there growing up, seeing Central Park Library being built. Those were some of my fondest childhood memories, especially later in life, as I spend more time there. My generation is the one that will be the most affected by whatever is decided for the station, long after many people in this meeting have gone. My peers and the families we will raise will still be here for decades to come. Therefore, it is vital that my generation have a seat on the table to ensure that this station will be one that works for everyone. After all, we are the future, and for the future to be bright, we must -- those who are members of the future, including yet those yet to be born, need to have a say on how it is shaped. Similarly, it is important for this task force to have a diverse range of voices to reflect the wide range of people who make up Santa Clara. I'm proud of the fact Santa Clara's diversity was reflected in class after class that I went to in the fine public schools of Santa Clara Unified School District, from Sutter to Booker to Santa Clara High. It was -- after all, it was John Adams who said on his thoughts of government that government should be miniature, an exact portrait of the people in large. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I look forward to the opportunity to contribute to the important work of the station area task force, hoping to serve in it so that it can be such an exact portrait of the people of Santa Clara, and to bring the viewpoints of the groups I am party of in order to help solve the burning issues we all face.
Thank you very much, sir. And what is your vision for TOD at the 244-acre Santa Clara Station area, as described in the city's general plan?
Well, I'm glad you asked. My vision comes in the folds of where I wrote in my -- of where I wrote in my application of what a successful outcome of this task force be. That of a plan for the station area that works for everyone and benefits the immediate community and the city as a whole. One, first, one that addresses the local housing crisis, a crisis that not only threatens my generation, but those who will be left behind with the cost of living that will prevent us from living here with our elders, let alone raise our own families here, but more gravely, all generations. We must go beyond the listed state opportunity TOD housing program. Part of that bold vision is that we -- is that I'm champion, is that in addition to building more affordable housing as part of TOD for the station area, we must look at the European style of zoning, planning, and building of community. Mixed-use and how -- mixed-use rental housing projects, but how and what -- in what manner. 244 acres of this station area is a lot of room, but it's not unlimited. So therefore, we must make the most out of what room we have. The European style is that of affordable housing on top with businesses more towards the bottom. And of course, that would result -- with more closer communities, that will have resulted in more bike walking and biking, which means less driving, which means people will save money on gas. Moreover, for the TOD housing program, we must use their rental housing development property as forms of affordable housing to combat the ever-present and growing homeless and affordable housing crises, similar to how San Jose is doing. But with the tiny -- but with the station area, we will do what other cities do, but on a bigger scale. We must use it -- excuse me.
Take your time.
Here, the city of Santa Clara has the opportunity to live up to our motto, "The center of what's possible." Let's solve the issues of student housing and homelessness. Let's think outside the box of the general plan's current definition of TOD housing program and create a housing program where Santa Clara University students can live in these projects, therefore easing the pressure being put on the cost of living, especially rent, by reducing demand and increasing supply. With such affordability, we can provide much-needed rules for those people who would otherwise be homeless due to the high price of living. One, and second -- next, what we need -- my vision is one that takes full advantage of the connections to the rest of the Bay Area, such as job programs that will connect residents of these housing programs to jobs with businesses all over the Bay Area, which will further combat homelessness. And next, one that will bring new tourists and visitors to this city, not just the county, directly to the city, who will help enrich our businesses. We can do this in the form of new VTA bus routes based out of the station area and a shuttle service that will take such visitors, tourists, directly to Santa Clara businesses, with prime examples being hotels, motels, where they can stay the night, or our fine restaurants and bars where they can partake in our nightlife and our fine dining, enjoy fine dining and world-class cuisine. Either way, it will further enrich our businesses and city culverts while cutting down on pollution. Next, one that improves traffic by encouraging more people to use public transportation transit, therefore reducing congestion. After all, increased use of transit thanks to TOD at the station area will increase traffic, will improve, will reduce the amount of traffic we have to deal with on a daily basis on the roads. Because with more transit options and more bus routes, we will encourage more people to use public transportation, therefore reducing congestion. Bring it up -- that brings up my vision of the station area that breathes -- and the station area that breathes new life by being carbon neutral, at the very least, hopefully carbon negative, with being something looking like the California Academy Sciences, instead of just some more boring stone buildings. Which next is one with open space curations, such as the youth soccer center and Central Park and Larry Marceli Park. Moreover, we have -- going back to the example of the California Academy Sciences, instead of having rooftop solar-powered, having solar power for the rooftops, and rooftop gardens is a good start, but it would be even better if something more on the lines of epic historical proportions. Why limit ourselves to just rooftop gardens when we can have rooftop slash urban farming, such as in the form of aquaponics? Not only this will allow the TOD and the station area to be carbon negative, but it will allow us to grow fresh, healthy foods for our children and the needy and homelessness. The prior group can learn firsthand how our food is grown. This is -- will be a true modern marvel that will drove San Jose's plan a breeze of innovation, because our curation would be much more aesthetically stunning, but much more practical. I hope we can -- I will -- I can work towards achieving as much of this bold vision as possible to avoid vast possibilities, to inquire about new ideas, and boldly build, and perhaps boldly build what hasn't been built yet.
I understand. Want to know where he lives, because I think he's campaigning for one of our jobs, but can't tell.
So it sounds like you've got the whole plan figured out, Daniel. So, but could you please tell us about at least three public facilities in the area?
Oh, I have a list of a lot of public facilities, but first, and of course, how -- first, I think most appropriate, how can I forget my beloved middle school, Booker Middle School? And of course, there is the historic train depot, as I recall, one of the oldest, one of the oldest in this whole state of California. Then there is the police station, and of course, depending on how you define closeness, there's also, well, here in City Hall and across the streets in the Trinity Art Museum.
All right. Thank you, Daniel, for applying. I love your enthusiasm. Do you see any potent, excuse me, do you see, foresee any potential conflicts of interest with respect to your business or financial interests in serving on this task force? Will you disclose those when discussing any of these issues?
Well, so therefore, so well, one of the benefits of my youth is the, my lack of, of business or financial interests. So therefore, I do not see, at, at least at this point, I do not foresee any potential conflicts of interest. But of course, in the unlikely case that any do come up while serving on this task force, I will immediately disclose them and take appropriate actions such as, such as a recusal.
Awesome. Thank you, Daniel, and you're not alone.
Thank you, Daniel. What do you think about 15-minute communities or urban villages?
Well, 15-minute communities, also according to my research, 15-minute, also called 15-minute cities are definitely a desirable goal that we need to consider and aim for, especially in regards to the opportunities that new programs such as the station area present, TODs and the station area. Not only it's a part of the growing concept of the Build Back Better movement idea, you know, that has come up after the pandemic, it will also help reduce our carbon footprint. But with its focus on places that are walkable and places where daily needs are, well, as the name holds it, within 15 minutes, a 15-minute walk or bike ride, it will be better for groups of people who have been historically left that, left out or under considered in the planning process, such as those people with disabilities and/or the elderly, allowing them to, it will allow them to access businesses and service more easily. It would also encourage more people to walk and bike, so that would also encourage physical fitness. Because, you know, the question is, why would they drive to somewhere if it's so close to them? Like how I can just walk from Central Park or Santa Clara High from my house in under an hour? The result would be people would save money on gas and we would have cleaner air and less pollution. The overall effect would be improved public health with the increase of physical fitness and decrease in pollution. And of course, there are possible models we can look like. I know Portland, Oregon, back in 2012, they also did something like that. And there are also numerous examples abroad that are also worth looking at. As for urban villages, I touched them, I touched upon them earlier in my answer to when I mentioned the European-style model of, the European-style model. For more local examples, San Jose defines them as areas that include residential and job-based development and have transit, access to transit and are walkable and bike-friendly, with them being a major part of their strategy. I believe an example of a local existing example would be San Taro, but that would be more of an upscale one. And I know currently that there's one in discussion for Cambrian Park. We need to be cautiously optimistic about them. We need to ensure that they actually have affordable housing. And of course, there's the matter of striking the right balance in regards to their density so as not to have an overwhelming, overwhelming negative effect, impact on traffic. But urban villages are definitely an item for discussion and inquiry for this task force with academics, the consultants, and the larger community. The idea of urban villages speaks to the heart of TOD and its goal of self-sustain, self-contained, sustainable communities where people can walk, bike to the places they need to go, get, and go get the things they need. It's moreover, to the name, like a village, there's the social aspect of it being a close-knit community where people, where people, since they don't have to go far to get their needed goods, can bond and connect with their neighbors. The idea of urban villages is definitely worth running through the Sarkisian method with the mentioned, already mentioned parties.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What is your view on minimum parking ratios?
I believe we need to be, well, similar to urban villages and I believe we need to be cautious when it comes to urban parking ratios. I know San Jose has gotten rid of them. While I see the importance of ensuring people, parking spaces for people calls, I see the logic of recent, of recent calls to reduce such ratios, parking space by, because by shifting the cost of, to developers and making construction more expensive, those costs, well, simple economics, are passed down to, onto the, onto housing, therefore making housing more expensive. So furthermore, and then there's furthermore, there's the issue of traffic congestion. It's basic economics when it comes to about incentive and, incentive and supply. Economics teaches us that there's a limited supply. In this case, there's only so much space for parking. People's expectation of parking, parking drive closer to locate their destination, encourage them to drive, drive there, drive there, therefore fueling the man for parking. The result being them circling blocks, looking for said parking space. Therefore, there's more, therefore the result would be more traffic, more pollution, and the chances of accidents are higher. And therefore, there's, moreover, there is the matter of dense, of density. When you have a lot of people parking slash people parked in a limited confined space, the result would be chaotic traffic as people are driving back and forth from this space. From, and then there's the affordable housing aspect, the principle, there's the economic principle of opportunity cost. We as a community must ask ourselves, what is the opportunity cost of any proposed, for any proposed changes to minimum parking ratios? Particularly, what is the opportunity cost of having, of having them in the first place? And what opportunities do we unlock by following San Jose example of getting rid of them? Of course, on the other hand, there, we can encourage people to use transit, bike, walk, all we can, but there will always be people who drive, so we will, there will be, always be the need for parking.
Thank you very much. The final question is, what is your view on affordable housing?
Well.
Affordable housing targets in particular.
Sorry. Well, well, they're definitely, they're definitely an essential goal. Of course, according to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, Santa Clara County, we need over 54,000 new affordable, new affordable, affordable rental homes, including over 40,000 targeted for extremely low income to simply, to simply meet existing good, existing needs, just to break even. And considering our neighbor, San Jose's housing director is retiring, failing to resolve their, resolve San Jose's housing crisis and failing to hold herself and her, are accountable for such failures. And simply put, we're running out of time. It looks like we're, we all need to do more to reach affordable housing targets and aim higher. Moreover, going back to urban villages and 15-minute communities that cities, we need to think more than just building affordable housing. Otherwise, we risk becoming too cold and focused on business and almost akin to the Macamara fallacy. We also have to think about the, what communities we want, what they will look like, and the social, and the, about the social aspects and mechanics of these communities for affordable housing. After all, a part of the importance of affordable housing is the social aspect of actually maintaining community and families so that members of mine and future generations can choose, can choose to live here, if, to live here, to stay close to our elders and to raise our own families in the neighborhoods we grew up in.
Thank you very much. You have one minute to give us a closing.
So my one-minute closing statement, I would like, once again, like to much start how I begin my opening statement. I would like to, once again, thank the council for voting to interview me here along with the other finalists. I'm extremely honored and humbled to be considered among them and to just be interviewed here. As a lifelong resident of Santa Clara, I have a deep interest in our community, especially its future. I want to raise my family here and show them all my, all the old haunts and places I grew up, to tell them about our rich history, about what used to be here and how we have changed and grown over the years. That dream is looking less and less possible with the ongoing crisis of, regarding affordable housing. Plus, we have bigger fish to fry with the climate crisis affecting our global community. It's these stakes that give me and my generation a unique perspective on how we can use what we have, such as the station area, to solve these solutions for our, solve these issues for our community.
Thank you very much.
Next applicant is Shruti Murashi and we will move her over. She is online.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you and you have three minutes to give us your, an introduction.
Yeah, sure thing. Is there a way I can share my screen?
I think you can. I think that, that's, that's possible.
I don't see that option, so if someone can enable that, it would be great.
Okay, I think staff is looking at that right now.
Shruti, you need to accept the prompt that you're a panelist so you can share your screen.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I see the prompt now.
We can see your screen.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Hi, commissioners. So my name is Shruti Murashi. I have a background in engineering. I'm a civil engineer and a structural engineer and I'm currently pursuing my second masters. I have worked in academia and industry, both in India and the US. And currently, I'm on a break to take care of my six-year, six-month-old son. Last year, I chaired redistricting commission for the city of Santa Clara, so I have some experience working with the city and it was a wonderful experience. So I'm hoping that that experience is going to help if I'm accepted on this task force. And the reason that I applied is basically that I strongly believe that for living a satisfying and rewarding life, it is essential that you do something for others. And the best way is to serve your community and that is why I'm here. So this is my brief introduction. And just a heads up, I've kept all my answers to the, all the questions and introduction quite brief in the interest of everyone's time, but if you feel like asking me follow-up questions, please do so.
Thank you very much for that. I think we'll start with the questions and that will be Councilmember Watanabe.
Thank you for applying, Shruti. So what is, excuse me, what is your vision for transit-oriented development at the 244-acre Santa Clara Station Area as described in the city's general plan?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So I went through the general plan and realized that this area is the focus area. And I read through all the policies and the goals and based on that, I've come up with a crisp vision that I have. My vision for this area is that it should be a welcoming, versatile, sustainable place for people from all stratum of society, belonging to all age groups. Basically, I wanted to be welcoming for everyone, right from a child to old person. Everyone should feel welcome and also the people from lower-income groups to a very well-established business person. Everyone should feel at home and not feel uncomfortable at all. This is my primary vision.
Thank you.
And again, as a reminder, please you to ask me follow-up questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilmember Becker with question number two.
Thank you. Thank you for applying. Please tell us at least three public facilities in this area.
Yeah, the three that I came up with was Santa Clara Police Station, the Calatren Station, the Historic Clariter Station, and the New Hall Park.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shruti. Do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest with respect to your business or financial interests in serving on this task force? If you do have those, would you disclose those when discussing issues?
I don't see any conflict of interest as of now and if they ever come up, I will disclose them. Thank you.
Thank you. What do you think of 15-minute communities or urban villages?
I love these. I grew up in India and basically where I lived in, those were all 15-minute communities. Everything was accessible and I see a lot of benefit in that. So basically, I wrote a few points because I see by, it is going to be beneficial. I see it is potential to reduce long commutes, traffic, pollution, and stress. So long commute every, everybody is going to be happy if everything is accessible nearby. It is going to create, I believe it is potential to create healthier place to live. And because it is going to save a lot of time, residents are going to get a lot of me-time, which everyone craves for these days. And I think because everything is close by, people are not going to use their cars and either bike or walk to different places, which will encourage social interaction. And I believe it is going to promote neighborly sense of community, which is very crucial from my perspective for the growth of a city and a community. And as I learned in school, that we humans are social animals. So it is important that we interact more with different people, which 15-minute communities are going to encourage. And it is not only going to be beneficial for the physical health, but also the mental health of the residents. So I love these ideas, these communities.
Thank you very much. And what is your view on minimum parking ratios?
Yeah, I mean, I think these are great. It is a great initiative and it gives a message that car is no longer the king. And it, it encourages the efforts to build more housing. It is going to create more space to build more housing and improve public transportation. Overall, it is great for environment and also the people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shruti. So the last question that we have for you is, what is your view on affordable housing targets?
Yeah, I, I think those are great and very important. And the most important, the gist of what I feel is that it is going to encourage inclusivity and it ensures that people from all the stratum are included and with the community as a whole is growing and we are taking care of everyone in our community, so, which is great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that's last the question, so you have one minute to give us a closing.
Yeah.
Want to say argument, but it's not an argument.
Yeah, like I mentioned, I am very passionate about serving the city and that was, that is the reason why I'm applying again for a different task force. And last year, I applied for redistricting commission and I enjoyed it a lot. I believe I have experience working with the city and also with other people collaborating. I'm a good listener. I like to keep my suggestions and inputs crisp, but if, if asked for, I can also elaborate on what do I feel and also give the reasons. So I'm comfortable speaking in a crisp manner and also in the elaborate manner, depending on what is the situation, how much time do we have? So I do that. Being an engineer, I'm used to, I'm used to read through the data, understand what is being said and what solutions to implement. And yeah, to end it, I know that I'm going to enjoy serving the city and having that pride and relaxed outlook towards it is going to help the team and the city. And it is also going to make me very satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shruti.
The next applicant is Hari Oja. He is online, he or she is online, and we will be moving them over.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, Hari.
Hello, hi. Can you hear me? Yeah, thank you.
So you'll have three minutes to give us an opening, opening statement, and then we'll go into the questions, and then you'll have one minute for closing statement.
Sure. Hi, everyone. Hello, Commissioner, I'm Hari Prasad Oza, and I live in Santa Clara, 440 North Winchester Boulevard. First of all, thank you so much for this opportunity. I live in California, Santa Clara, and I have a business here in El Camino and Lafarge Street. I have a liquor store and a Netflix restaurant called Momohub down 1670 Lafarge Street. I came to United States in 2015 and did my MBA from there. After that, I've been always actively working in the nonprofit sector too, and within our like Netflix company too, but now I'm taking this opportunity, like I applied this one so that I can use my knowledge and also I can learn something more about the city and to, as far as my best, like can help in the city too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for applying, Harry. Your first question is, what is your vision for TOD at the 244-acre Santa Clara Station area as described in the city's general plan?
Thank you so much for the question. Yeah, TOD is very crucial, and it has been going from long, like we have been hearing about from 2000, the plan has started, and we're on 2023 on the construction phase. Here, I would like to like more emphasize on like, we need to do something creative, like we have been using the same same kind of old model, like we're talking about train or bar station, but now if we can think something different, because the concept of like hyperloop or something is coming, if we can add something new also, that would be great, but but I but there's there's been already like funding and all the resources has already been utilized, but maybe we could not think about that. But apart from that particular thing, I think the place, the station, the TOD center should be like welcoming and like it should as it should be for everyone like, because as you know, the Santa Clara, that that part will be like really main hub per our city, so that's all, yeah, should be like welcoming, affordable, like, and beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for applying. Please tell us about at least three public facilities in this area.
Thank you. The three facility that I see is the Caltrain Station and the Bar Second Project itself, and we have Santa Clara Police Department and Fire Department.
Thank you. Do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest with respect to your business or financial interests in serving on this task force? Will you disclose?
Sorry for that.
Will you disclose? Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I didn't see any conflicted interest because my business is like a decor store, which is, I did not, there should not be any conflict interest, but if there would be any, like I would really help as far my interest, like on that time.
Thank you very much. And what do you perceive as benefits or drawbacks of 15-minute communities or urban villages?
Yes, the 15-minute community is still a really beautiful thing because we have like everything like in a certain area, but beside that, sometimes like if we are doing everything on the same place, the traffic management, if it is not good, can have some drawback, but overall, like if we see, if we balance the drawback and advantage, I think there are more advantages on 15-minute communities.
Thank you for applying, Harry. So my question for you is, what is your view on minimum parking ratios?
Thank you for the question. Yeah, also, while I was preparing for this answer, like I always get like dealing with like parking ratio, sometime we can see like some of the space had lots of parking space which are made, but they are like vacant, like there is no no any use, but sometime we can see the parking ratio are made, but the car, there are many, so it is really important thing, like we need to figure out like which, how we can do that, but certain ratio sometime doesn't work in space, like some of the space, but yes, that's me.
Thank you, Harry.
Okay, for the last question, we have, what is your view on affordable housing targets?
Thank you for the question. Affordable housing is like, talking about the target, like we need that one, and the will building the building new construction or doing that in the city of Santa Clara, we're doing really, I think we're doing really good job there, but but I think we need to have more more plans on affordable housing kind of thing right now, because we don't have bart and all, so that because of that, affordable housing thing is working out, but later on, maybe when this thing will go up, maybe we need more of those things too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that leads us to, you have a one-minute closing statement?
Thank you so much for this opportunity. As I say, I I'm a person who came from Nepal, like on 2015 did my MBA, and started my own liquor store and a restaurant here in Santa Clara, city of Santa Clara. I am a learner. I want to learn about the things, and sometime I could not explain as I want, but yeah, I would love to work with the city, with this team and give my idea also. It will be really good platform for me to learn too. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next applicant, Dylan Plain.
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Plain. You have three minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Crabtree, Mr. Panetta, and the staff for the recommendation, and thank you all for being here today to allow me to interview. I want to start by addressing my potential conflict of interest. I'm a commercial real estate advisor, that's my occupation. I advise property owners on the highest and best use for their real estate. This is determined by land use and zoning requirements, development standards, and market conditions. My team has worked closely with Mr. Crabtree and the planning department on a number of projects in the city of Santa Clara and within this specific station area. I've always worked with the city, using their guidance on how to best advise my clients. If taking on this role will prevent me from, you know, continuing to do business in this area, it's just something I can't do, but I don't feel like it's something that will prevent me from adding value to this role. Very familiar with the station area plan that was set forth in the original general plan from 2010. I've read the portion cover to cover, also aware that's going to have to be restructured over the next couple of years to, and that's that's why we're all here today. The original development standards included 1.5 million square feet of retail and hotel, 500,000 square feet of commercial office, and 1,600 residential dwelling units. Essentially, those have all been absorbed thus far. Coleman High Line is a development between, that spans San Jose and Santa Clara, they built 2 million square feet of office, 650,000 of which is actually right, the building sits on the border between San Jose and Santa Clara. Next to it is a development they're also building called Gateway Crossings, 24 acres, 1,600, it's currently under construction, 1,600 residential units, 45,000 square feet of retail, a 225-room hotel, and a two-acre park. So basically, all of those requirements that were set forth in 2010 plan have been absorbed, but it creates an opportunity to add to that and, you know, create more of a hub for the city right here. It also has created a little bit of a challenge for property owners today because they ask, what's what's the future of my property hold, and it's a little bit unclear because we're going to be restructuring this plan, so I just think the sooner that we can kind of put a plan forward, the better. Market conditions will also be important. Office vacancy in Santa Clara is almost 30%. Don't really need to build more office, that's a product of the pandemic. Industrial vacancy, 2%, there's no supply, not necessarily this area for industrial because of the transit, but you know, those are things to take into account as we embark on this new plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. That'll take us to our first question, Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you for applying. What is your vision for transit-oriented development at the 244-acre Santa Clara Station area as described in our city's general plan?
Yeah, so Santa Clara Station area will serve as a gateway into the city and is intended to improve the city's economic base with expanded hotel, office, and retail uses as well as maximizing residential development with proximity to transit. That's straight out of the general plan. I think it still holds true. There's some tweaks here, and you know, general plan wasn't written with COVID in mind, so things have changed, but basically, it's a live-work-play environment. That's what I I kind of refer to it as. You want to be able to live, you know, work and seek out entertainment all in the same vicinity so that it helps alleviate traffic concerns and pressures, and it's been proven, I think Santa Clara Square is a good example of a very successful development that's similar where it's office, surrounded by hotel, or sorry, residential, and then a retail hub with Whole Foods and those restaurants. It's a successful, you know, case study.
Please tell us about three public facilities in the area.
Yep, thanks. Santa Clara Transit Center, it's the cornerstone of this project. It's one of the most well-connected transit hubs in the Bay Area, has service from Caltrain, Ace Rail, Amtrak, VTA, and eventually BART. And I also think that underboring that was installed in 2017 is a huge piece. I mean, it really connects the eastern part of this area. Without that, you don't have a, you know, a station area. Second, Costco, that whole shopping center, circulation is going to be very important around there because you're adding 1,600 residential units next door, and it's already a very busy parking lot with lines on Coleman and Broca, so very important to take that into consideration. And then, within the Gateway Crossing development that's being built right now, there's going to be a two-acre park. I think that's going to be a really cool addition to the community, add a sense of community to the area rather than just a concrete jungle.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And you've already talked touched on some of the potential conflicts that you see, but could you go into a little bit more detail on what what problems you could see arising and what what you could do about them?
Yeah, I'll happily disclose any, so full disclosure, I, you know, I know many of these property owners, I've talked to them before as part of my business, I've sold properties within the area. Happy to disclose if I'm, you know, in that process or in conversation with anyone. I don't, I don't have any voting shares. I don't think that me putting, offering some advice on market conditions and land use will create any kind of financial benefit for me. I'm a 25-year-old young professional looking to, you know, build my resume and contribute to the community, and I don't have finances to have interest with right now, so that's that's what I think.
Thank you for applying, Dylan. So what do you think about 15-minute communities or urban villages?
Yeah, I think they're a really good way to, it's a good hub for the city. It's like Santa Clara Square. I think Santana Road is another example where you have a live-work-play environment all in the same area. It allows you to bring traffic off the roads and alleviate some of those concerns, and then it creates a hub for the city where there's a lot of life and, you know, activity, and there's a number of areas where I think it's been successful, and I think it's a very strong idea for this area in particular with the transit hub right there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Becker, we have the question number five.
Thank you. What is your, what is your view on minimum parking ratios?
Thank you. New state law AB 2097 was, I believe, was put forth earlier this year or late last year. It basically reduced parking requirements and costs for developers who are building housing with proximity within a half mile of transit train station, so that's going to be a huge factor here. I think as far as like this kind of hub that we're striving for, where there's a live-work-play retail, there are some ways to incentivize people to take public transit, not just an idea, but it's almost like a parking validation at a whatever, the mall or somewhere where a retail establishment could actually offer a couple-dollar discount if you provide your train ticket, and so that would incentivize people, because a lot of people would prefer to drive, at least right now, maybe that's a product of the pandemic, but if you can incentivize people to take transit, then you can reduce your parking requirements and allow, I think that's kind of the goal of this plan, is the station is the hub and build around it.
To continue with that, what is your view on affordable housing targets?
Think, we all know there's a huge demand to add affordable housing across the state, in the Bay Area, and in the city. Believe that the Santa Clara's new ordinance is all new development, residential developments over 10 units, which is basically all of them, 15% have to be affordable, and so it's great that the city's already kind of implemented those plans, and we'll continue to see that, but there's a huge need to add affordable housing to the inventory, and it's it's only going to get more important as we battle inflation and all these other headwinds that we're dealing with.
Thank you very much. I think that that gives, that that leads us to the one-minute closing statement.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's time and efforts. I hope that through this interview, I've shared some of my knowledge for the area and passion, you know, for my business, but also for the, you know, the city and the community. I truly believe I can add value to this role, and I want to see the the city prosper and view this as incredible opportunity to contribute to, you know, society, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. And that leads us, I believe, to our final applicant, who is Michael Stockwell.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to to present in front of you, and so, so my name is Michael Stockwell. I've been in the valley for 40 years, and I love the valley. I live in South San Jose, live and work here. Broadcast engineer, been with multiple radio stations for the past 40 years, and one opportunity I had to work at KNTA in Franklin Square for many years, back in the 80s, and enjoyed working in Santa Clara, and that's when I discovered the transit area. And so I am on the Board of Directors at SBHRS, which is also known as the South Bay Historical Railroad Society. I've been there for about 15 years, been on the board for 10, and have been the chairman for about the last two years, so the area is very near and dear to my heart, not just from a historic standpoint, but also from the historic, the trains and all that, and so very much love that. So, so it's an opportunity to, for me to be able to continue how the historic fiber of Santa Clara and the valley is, so that's, that's that.
Thank you very much. I believe that will take us to first question from Councilmember Jane.
Thank you. What is your vision for TOD at the 244-acre piece of property at the station as described in the general plan?
So the the plan described is, you know, I look at a vibrant area that really causes people to to be in the center of the, around the transit district, and, you know, I see it as an opportunity to redevelop some of it as an opportunity to redevelop some of the urban sprawl that happened earlier. So, I'm in favor of it, and I think the opportunity is to create an area that represents and preserves the historic fiber and makes the city of Santa Clara, which makes the city of Santa Clara a rich part of the history, so.
Thank you very much. And can you please tell us a little bit about the three public facilities that you've chosen?
So, the three public facilities, obviously, the depot, which is the cornerstone to this whole project, the depot, there's the tower, there's the buildings around that, obviously the police station, and I also think that the, and I'm not sure if you'd qualify it as a public place, but at one time, the mission would be a public place. And I think that's, you know, that really speaks to the fiber of this area.
Thank you very much, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for applying, Michael. So, my question for you is, do you foresee any potential conflicts of interest with respect to your business or financial interests in serving on this task force? And would you be, would you disclose those when discussing issues?
Yes, I don't see any conflicts whatsoever with regards to my business or financial investments. I have nothing like that here, and absolutely I would come forth with any concerns that I would have about any future conflicts.
Thank you for applying, Michael. What do you, what do you think about 15-minute communities or urban villages?
I'm definitely an advocate of, of the concept, and unfortunately, sometimes what comes to mind is Santana Row. And so, my question for a 15-minute urban community is, so, we're obviously locating it next to a transit hub, which is obviously what happened there, and this is a great opportunity. I guess my question is, is does the 15-minute community, which I think is a healthy option for people, it allows people to, to not drive, not have to have cars, be able to get everywhere that they need to go, goods and services, everything like that, does it allow for outside use as well? Does it allow for non-residential use as well? Does it bring other people in, which is, I'm assuming what Santa Clara would like to have as well? So, how does that work into, well, I think it's, it's paramount, and I think that's the way we're, the world's going, especially around a transit hub, is how do you accomplish both?
What, what is your view on the minimum parking ratios?
The minimum parking ratio, I see where it's necessary to some degree. I see, I think alleviating it would be an issue. I think right now in our, in where we are in the Valley, is that people aren't quite ready to give up their car. Some people are, so with regards to the 15-minute community. Are all the people that live in the 15-minute community going to give up their cars? So, there's going to need parking for them. A place like the museum, we still need to have parking around there. There are people who come to the Santa Clara Depot for Giants games, hopefully the 49er games, you know, and, and then there are also people who get off there to go over to the earthquake games. So, I think that there's an opportunity to still have parking right now that allows for people to use their cars because they still need to, but then also build into the plan that as that pressure gets relieved, that those structures or plots get built into something that fit into the 15-minute community.
Thank you. What is your view on affordable housing targets?
I think affordable housing is paramount. I think that we need to be able to create a diverse community, a diverse economic community. And as I heard somebody else say, which is very true, is that people of all different levels, professionals down to the people who, you know, work at the restaurants, everything, everybody needs to be able to be here. We don't want some people to have to drive because they can't afford to live here. We want people to work, play, do everything here. So, I think affordable housing is definitely paramount.
Thank you very much, sir. And that's the last question, and that brings us to your closing statement.
Yeah, so I think the, the benefit, what I could bring to this, to this task force is, after being in the historical society for so many years and working with the BART project, Caltrain on the, when we rebuilt the tunnel and all that, working to preserve the tower, which is slated to be on a historic register, dealing with the depot, dealing with roofing, and all, all the different things that go into the historic fiber of preserving this area, I think that I could provide some insight in the initial planning process that might save time and effort with dealing with the covenant that protects these facilities, and also keeping the vision of the historic area.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
And that concludes the interviews, and I think at this point, we will have to come up the process on selection.
Yes, before we move forward, Rena Brio is online, and she says she has a response to your question that you asked at the beginning.
I see.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. So, a question was asked earlier this evening about whether or not this is a Brown Act body. So, we do know it's a Brown Act body. The main reason for that is because the city council is appointing these members, so that will be the criteria for making this a Brown Act body.
Our councilmember Becker and Jane.
Yeah, or Rena, so will they be getting the same exact training that basically all of us get, which is a Brown Act training and crash course, more than likely Xander or somebody from City Attorney's Office?
Yeah, we will definitely arrange that at the beginning of the task force.
Thank you. So, being a Brown Act committee, it will be meeting in person, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we have another question from Councilmember Becker.
There's one more question I forgot to ask you, and it was about attendance, and is there going to be a attendance policy kind of similar to all the other committees? I know that, that has been a concern that I've been hearing, is about attendance policies and making sure that people show up, especially if they want to commit to these things.
Yes, I believe so. I believe that this would apply, the attendance policies that we've been implementing across all commissions would apply to this as well.
Cool, thank you.
And we have the clerk, I believe you had a comment.
So, if you'd like to move forward to your deliberation and then the method of how you will be voting this evening, I see the recommendation is to appoint four additional task force members, and I understand there's these three categories, the transportation representative, the business community representative, and the at-large. Will you be selecting one from the business and the transportation, and two from at-large, or how would, how would the council?
I think that's a good question, meaning though, I think that the different categories, the intent seemed to be that we wanted a person from each category, but at the same time, I don't know that's a strict requirement. I think that we should probably look into appointing someone from the, or trying to appoint somebody from the different categories to get a diversity of candidates, but I don't know that there's any, a, you know, requirement to do so, and I see, we have a comment from Councilmember Jane.
Yeah, I think we should respect the categories. I think we should have three votes. We should probably have a vote on transportation between the two candidates, and a vote on business between the two candidates, and then we could have a vote on the at-large, where instead of casting one vote, we would cast two votes or some, that's my recommendation.
So, basically, you're saying that we should consider the transportation candidates as one vote, and then, well, then the business community candidates, and then choose two from the at-large? That's, we need to make a motion for this, to accept this as the method, or?
I'll second.
Looks like we have a motion from Councilmember Becker, and a second from Councilmember Hardy, and I believe it was to vote on each of the categories, there are three categories, but for the at-large category, we would pick two.
Just to confirm, that's single member, each category, two for at-large, correct?
A single vote.
Single vote for each category, and then two for at-large. Okay, that's.
I don't see any comments, but I guess my comment was, there's nothing that would preclude us from picking two people from transportation or two people from business community, for example. That was, that was my point.
Is that the council's pleasure? I just would need to know, are you voting for one or for two?
I just chair the meeting.
Okay, so, let me, entering the motion here.
So, I, just so you know, I can see them, but I did not see anybody in this speaker list, but we have a comment from Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. I think it's important to notice that we had over 100 applicants, which is amazing, and we're down to just, and then we had 31 who turned in the second application, and we have eight people who showed up today. So, I am thrilled that there are so many people who would like to be part of this, and I will say that any combination would be wonderful. It's, it's hard for us to pick, and I want you to know that, because even if you are not chosen, no matter how this turns out, I hope that you will continue to be involved and apply again, please.
There's always boards, other boards and commissions. Okay.
So, if there are no other comments on the motion, looks like we have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Watanabe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like everyone voted, and that's unanimous.
Just for the people in the audience, some of the, the councilmembers are voting by the application, and some of them are being roll called voted, so if it doesn't seem like everyone's being called, everyone's vote is being recorded. Just want to make that, make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll proceed with, we'll go in alphabetical order. We'll do the business community representative first.
Okay.
And that was Hari Oja and Dylan Plain, and if, we're going to proceed with one vote each? Okay, so, Councilmember Becker, please cast your vote.
Dylan Plain.
Councilmember Hardy?
Dylan Plain also.
Thank you. Councilmember Jane?
Dylan Plain.
Vice Mayor Park?
Dylan Plain.
Councilmember Becker, Watanabe.
Hari Oja.
So, it was four to one, four votes for Dylan and one for Hari. So, let me get that up there for the vote. Is there a motion to appoint Dylan?
So, a motion to appoint Dylan Plain, seconded by Councilmember Hardy. And saying no discussion, can we go to a roll call vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously.
And that would take us to, I believe, Transportation Applicate next, and we have Rich Blanco and Jill Huff.
Oh, did I give that to you? I'm sorry. Okay, Councilmember Becker?
Rich Blanco.
Jill Huff.
Councilmember Jane?
Jill Huff.
Vice Mayor Park?
I will say, Rich Blanco.
Councilmember Watanabe.
Jill Huff.
Okay, the highest vote getter was Jill Huff for three votes, Rich, two.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jill Huff to the position.
Second.
I don't see any discussion on the motion, so if we can go to vote.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Takes us to our final category, which is at-large, and we've got one, two, three, four at-large candidates, and we will vote for two.
For your top two. Councilmember Becker?
Daniel Hyun and Michael Stockwell.
Councilmember Hardy?
Raymond Hashimoto and Michael Stockwell.
Councilmember Jane?
Raymond Hashimoto and Shriti Mirashi.
Vice Mayor Park?
I'll go with Daniel and Michael.
And Councilmember Watanabe?
Michael Stockwell and Ray Hashimoto.
Okay, so that will be Michael Stockwell with four votes, Raymond Hashimoto with three votes.
Make a motion to appoint Michael Stockwell and Raymond Hashimoto to the at-large roles.
I'll second that.
Actually, I have a, I have a question I'd like to ask. I mean, I'm looking at the candidates, and I'm taking a lot of notes, and I'm thinking about the topic of diversity. I really like the candidates that we've chosen. I feel that it's been, it was really difficult, and one of the things that I'm trying to protect, well, not protect, but trying to promote, is diversity amongst the task force as well. And I remember the first time that I was appointed, actually, the only time I was ever appointed to anything in the city, it was because a councilmember here on the dais basically said, "Well, we have two positions, we've got three candidates, why can't we accept all three?" And I guess my request or my suggestion to this council is, what if we accepted the top two vote-getters, which, who would be Raymond and Michael, but could I, could I include another person that I think got enough votes to at least warrant consideration, which would be Daniel Hyun? Is there a problem with appointing all three to the task force as opposed to just appointing two? I don't know if.
Rena's on the line.
Rena would have any.
Just some thoughts. One, we do want to make sure we have an odd number that will help with ties, so that is why it would be best to stick with the number of candidates we requested. I would also say that this is going to be possibly the largest task force that we've had, and it is going to be a lot of work to, to, and I, I just want to share that for our perspective, but thank you.
Can, I have a question.
So we did have a Councilmember Jane with his hand up, and then I'll go to Becker afterwards.
If I read the report to council, it said the City Council also voted to include four additional members on the task force. And then it said with one representative from the SCS Portuguese Hall of Santa Clara, with three to be selected through an application process. So given that we had voted for four, I think we should stick with four.
Understood. Councilmember Becker? Okay, I think Councilmember Becker has withdrawn. Councilmember Hardy?
All right, I forgot, because I got so involved in Councilmember Jane's question. So my question is, is will we be able to have a, since there's two people left for at-large, or will we be able to have a standby list if anyone happens to resign or anyone decides to leave? Is that a possibility we can do?
So I guess the question would be, should we appoint alternate members?
Yeah. Are we able to do that? Rena?
And actually, I have a question, even before, even with, without considering alternate members, like I heard Councilmember Jane's comment on why we should appoint four, but is there anything that restricts us from appointing five?
I think the number, right? They don't want to be an even number, they want to be odd number.
Understood. But I understand the, the preference, but it is a preference.
Yeah, so first, I do think it is the prerogative of the council. We did organize the interview and application process as we conducted it. So I think that members of the public were expecting the, you know, individuals to be appointed as were disclosed, but it is the prerogative of the council. In terms of alternates, I would ask the Assistant City Clerk, I do believe that that could be something that could happen tonight, where you appoint alternates, and that could be potentially helpful. Through our downtown precise plan process, we did have some task force members who could not participate for the duration, and then we had to go back out for applicants. So if the Assistant City Clerk thinks that's possible, it could be very helpful to have alternates.
Okay. If that's easy for you, City Clerk, I will add that into my motion then, or I guess modify my motion is the word, which is, I will put Rich Blanco down as an alternate for Transportation Advocate, since he was the other applicant. And then for the Business Community, Hari Oja, I hope I said his last name right, forgive me if I didn't. And then I guess for at-large, now we have, we have two more, so Daniel would be an alternate, or, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a grasp here, we're appointing three tonight, but we had room for four.
So we're, we're appointing four. So we have one, one Transportation Advocate, one Business Community, and two at-large.
Okay. So then at-large will be then Daniel. I would motion to make Daniel as an alternate.
Do we want to first do the motion for the two at-large?
Sure.
I think that that would be better. Let's keep the votes clean. So first, we'll vote on appointing the two at-large members, then we'll have a separate vote to consider the alternates.
My hand is raised.
Councilmember Watanabe?
So Assistant City Clerk, in terms of the at-large applicants, we have the top two. Who was, who came in third, who came in fourth? Because we should go by who had the most votes.
Yes, sorry. The, the third, the runner-up was Daniel.
It was. And how many, how many did Shruti have?
One.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Are there any other comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to vote. I believe the motion was to appoint Raymond Hashimoto and Michael Stockwell, at-large representatives on the stationary replant task force.
And that was Anthony. Sorry, Councilmember Becker? Yeah.
And I will like to make another motion to have a alternate list. So if any of these members do decide that they cannot continue, that we will have runner-ups to fill in the void. And the first one will be for the Transportation Advocate, Rich Blanco as runner-up. For the Business Community, runner-up will be Hari Oja. And then for the at-large, runner-up will be Daniel Hyun.
I'll second that.
Is there any comment on that motion? Okay, then, looks like we've got a motion for three alternates, Rich Blanco for Transportation Advocate, Hari Oja for Business Community, and Daniel Hyun for at-large.
Yes.
And that leads us to the conclusion of the appointments, and I want to congratulate Michael Stockwell, who is in the audience. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much for coming, coming early, staying for the entire process, and staying until the end. Thank you very much. And I believe that leads us to the reports of members and special committees. Does anyone have anything to, to report? I see. We have Councilmember Hardy?
Very quickly, as some of you may know, that the governor has modified the water concerns and our state of emergency. The, what I want people to understand is that, yes, we've had a lot of water, but we also want to make conservation a way of life. So that is why there was a nuanced announcement, because we do have enough water, but we also want to be recharging all of our reservoirs, all of our underground aquifers, and we ask people to still be respectful and not waste water, is what we want to see happen. And we are working to make certain that we always have enough water. Ray Norshine, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for that. Is there anyone else? I would like to note that last week, Congress passed a resolution declaring Visaki on April 14th as National Sick Day to honor and celebrate the important role played by the sick community in strengthening and inspiring the people of the United States. And having a very strong sick community within Santa Clara, having the Godwara, the San Jose or the Silicon Valley Godwara here in our city, I would like to acknowledge our sick community and thank Congress for passing that resolution. That takes us to adjournment. Don't even, we have a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Thank you very much, everyone.